Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting of the city council to order. It's a meeting that gives us an opportunity to review and discuss appointments to the Salem Planning Commission. We have three applicants present, two you interviewed before. Now have Linda call the role, please.
Good evening, Councilor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Councilor Anderson?
Likewise.
Thank you, Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Thank you, Councilor Leon? Councilor Leon? Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Thank you, Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Thank you, Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Thank you, Councilor Lewis? Councilor Lewis, okay, and Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, well, to kind of bring up speed, the council boards and commission appointments committee met on Monday, January 31st. They are sending you three names in addition to Jordan Truitt and Logan Lor, who you have already identified. You'll recall having done that within the past few weeks. Tonight, we'll be talking with Kaylee Fott, Jennifer Timbrook, and Ron Ekes. Okay? So why don't we just go ahead and kind of let each of the candidates we're talking with this evening introduce themselves, give us a little background and their interest, and then we'll open it up for questions. Ekes, why don't we open up with you? You're still muted there.
So, sorry, the host muted me, so I I guess maybe she knows me too well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I moved to Salem 30 years ago. And moved up here because I was working as a public utility commissioner and got tired of commuting. And my mother was ill in Woodburn. And I thought I'd be going back to Eugene after about four or six years. It didn't turn out that way, and I made Salem my home. And I, so I've seen a lot of the growth in Salem, and I've lived in the same place out in South Salem, near the Candelaria School, ever since I moved here. I can give you a general background that I think my experience is translatable to the Planning Commission, particularly my experience with the Public Utility Commission, where we were the first state when I was chairman of the commission to introduce a least-cost planning or integrated resource planning process of long-term planning with short-term action plans. And the utility business is pretty detailed, so I'm not intimidated by a lot of paper, a lot of technical work, a lot of economic and legal analysis, as well as sort of the art of using there's a science to things and there's an art to decision-making. So I learned a great deal of that. I have a journalism background. And one of the things I learned there was that there are no stupid questions. And I learned the value of asking questions of experts and of working with colleagues to make a decision. I have other background as a consultant, mostly overseas internationally. I work for a congressional office. I'm familiar with the application of rules at all, laws and rules at all levels. Laws, rules, standards, and the process for setting those and implementing those. But I think what I'd like to do, because all my background is, I think, material you already have, but I'd like to give you a general approach. As I said, I've been here for 30 years. And what I've seen is a transition from what I would call, it used to be orderly growth was the goal, which to me meant making sure that there were rules that applied and the people that, and the growth coincided with those rules. And the process then, it pretty much was kept pushing out farther and farther out. And the urban growth boundary and neighborhoods kept getting farther and farther out. And I think now we're in a transition to what I would call smart growth, that we're not pushing out so much as we're looking inward and upward. And I see that happening now, and I see the city engaged in what I think is a real critical process of planning for the next several decades through the R-Salem process, the comprehensive plan and the climate action plan. And so I think, for me, it was a good time to think about, a perfect time for me to think about applying for the Planning Commission. And I generally support the goals as they've emerged in our Salem and the comprehensive plan. I know we need, we need more housing, we need more mixed housing, we need more options. For housing, we need more mixture of commercial and residential. We need to pay attention to the burdens that the housing and our businesses place on the transportation system. And making sure that we have a connected city with, that's connected, allowing people to have multiple methods of transportation to get around and access to not only work, but the amenities the city has and the services that the city has. I've participated through the neighborhood association and through my own neighborhood on a particular case of development here. So I've developed a little bit of an understanding of of the process and citizen participation. I'm not coming to you as someone who knows a lot of detail about the current operations of the Planning Commission. I'm trying to come to you as someone who I think has the skills that can be applied to that. But I'm not coming as an expert on the Planning Commission or even many of the decisions that have been made. I have some, I have some concerns. I have concern that while we need more housing, I don't want to see housing trample over other goals or trump all other goals, because I think those goals are integrated with the need for more housing. And one of the things I've learned or seen is that I don't think most people necessarily oppose development. When they oppose something, it's usually because of the impact they see of that development due to the design or the traffic impact or trees. But it's not necessarily anti-development. And I admit to having some of my own bends on where I'd like to go. But what I've learned is that having your own bend is not necessarily the basis for a decision. My experience tells me that new information, changing circumstances, and even legal framework and legal parameters can reshape whatever bent you have. And I think I come to the commission as someone who understands that process. And I think I said in my application, I see the the Planning Commission as primarily being an advisory committee, a filter, citizen involvement itself, but also filtering other citizens' involvement and being a filter of citizen involvement to the council, an advisor to the council on the critical planning issues that are going to need to be made in the next year or year and a half as the planning process takes place, including the transportation system plan. So I think I'll end there, and I'll, you have all my application and the questions that I wrote out, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, we'll move along and come back, Ron, thank you very much.
Should I mute myself? I am muted, okay. Linda, go back.
Okay, Kaylee?
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate your time tonight. It's a, this is, I think, a very worthwhile pursuit for myself. So my name's Kaylee Fott, and I'm an architect and associate with CB2 Architects in town. I'm also the current president of the American Institute of Architects, the Oregon chapter, where I just started my first term there. So I actually came to Salem after I attended University of Oregon to go to the School of Architecture there. I moved up from California, actually, where I had, I think, maybe an interesting combination of both an urban upbringing and a rural upbringing, which ultimately, I think, led to my landing in Salem as a kind of mid-sized city with, you know, a beneficial proximity to rural areas. I have a couple of courses that I actually am able to get to just under 15 minutes from my house, where I'm actually able to also walk to my office downtown. And I think that that's a pretty unique benefit of a city like Salem and ultimately what led me here. The other piece of that is I wanted to have a larger impact on my community. And after practicing in Portland for a couple of years, I found that, you know, the the type of city and the spaces I was experiencing were not really aligned with my vision for having this sort of pedestrian lifestyle. And living in Salem has this, you know, you get the, all the proximate benefits, right? Like I mentioned, being able to walk downtown, we have an incredible park system. And I think ultimately that creates this really fantastic place to live. You know, as far as joining the Planning Commission, I think my time serving on the board of the American Institute of Architects has really galvanized my understanding of consensus building, the responsibilities and the time commitment it takes to be on a board and, you know, listen to a variety of opinions and experiences and perspectives that is very necessary for any sort of decision when you're talking about the long-range planning and effects of the decisions made. And I think that, actually, Councilor Nordike, I have seen you speak several times, and I've found it inspiring to, you know, it really inspired me to want to get more involved in addition to simply being a part of projects throughout Salem. So I, as an architect, I've been involved with a variety of projects throughout Salem, from rural suburban as well as downtown. And I think, you know, working on those projects gives this, gives me the perspective of the different community scales that we're working within and the impact of any sort of development going in. I think I have the technical expertise as far as, you know, the types of projects and developments. And my work spans from nonprofit community impact projects, such as the new IMCA, to healthcare, multifamily housing, and commercial office space, so a pretty broad mix. And ultimately, I think I'm just very excited to be given the opportunity to present my case for why I should be a commissioner, and I hope you'll consider me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer?
Hi, my name is Jennifer McGlinty-Timbrook. And I moved to, we moved to Salem about nine years ago from a town outside of Chicago called West Chicago. And my husband got a job at forestry, so. And while I was there, I was on the Historic Landmarks Commission there for about four, five years, until we moved here. And then for the last five years, well, minus a year, for the last five years, I've been on the Historic Landmarks Commission. I served two terms as vice chair. And then I've also been part of the subcommittees for the Historic Preservation Plan update, which I was a commissioner then. And then I was the chair of the Subcommittee for Code Enforcement for the Historic Preservation Plan. So when it comes to participating in my civil government, I've, you know, been doing this for a really long time. I also work for the Department of Environmental Quality, working with wastewater permits and reading through those. So I understand like the different technical applications, all the different aspects of that, you know. I'm familiar with Salem Revised Code revolving planning and planning development. And running, you know, running public meetings. I understand the process of the way Salem is running, you know, runs its its public meetings and I don't know, I don't really have much to say, just I'm very, you know, I'm very excited about volunteering and being part of the city government, which is why, obviously, for the last so many years, I've been on the Historic Landmarks Commission. And I also, I also have a background. I have a graduate certificate in historic preservation and urban planning. So, and I went to graduate school prior to that for urban planning. So I have a big familiarity with planning, community development, all the different aspects of it, economic, socio-economic aspects. And then, you know, we're also looking at environmental justice. There's so many different aspects of community development. So I just, I believe that I think that I would just be an objective commissioner, having been, you know, someone who understands what the purpose of the commissions are. And looking, you know, I understand that some things can be controversial. We've had our fair share of controversial things with the landmarks committees. And, yeah, so I just really appreciate you taking the time. And I really, this really wasn't something that I had, you know, actively sought out. I was looking, I was thinking about something, and so I went onto the site, and I saw that there is an opening. And so I was like, oh, I have, I think it's been a year since I turned, I turned out as a landmarks commissioner. So I didn't leave because I was leaving, I left because I had to. So I've just always been really excited to, you know, find out when I could, you know, figure out how I could re-involve myself with the public process and helping Salem just be the best that it can be, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, thank all three of you for joining us this evening. I'm gonna throw it open for any questions. Trevor, do you mind if I start with you?
Sure. Well, I mean, I, I, I wasn't expecting to go first, so thank you.
First in mine's screen right now, so.
Fair, fair. So, I mean, I just want to start by, by maybe repeating what the mayor just said. Thank you for really, you know, seeking out this service to our community. I mean, it is a volunteer position, and it's important. So, you know, really, this week's candidates, you know, thank you, as well as the candidates who showed up last month. I mean, let me see if I can think of something quickly. I mean, it is a substantial time commitment. I know one of the questions is, you know, you all said, yes, you could do 75% of the meetings. But, you know, you just maybe verify that and say like, what, you know, was the main motivator to seek out this volunteer position?
Okay, and all three, Trevor?
Sure, yes, please.
Great, Jennifer, why don't we start with you?
Um, well, like I just said, I was, I wasn't, you know, I just, it happened. I happened to see it, and I was like, ooh, I really would like to be able to participate again because I've been missing being on a commission, and I really did enjoy every minute. I think even, you know, things that were stressful. I just really enjoyed participating in it, and I was just very enthusiastic to want to be part of it again. And, and yes, I do understand the time commitment involved. And I've always had my time carved out for my Thursday evenings, the third Thursdays of every month are still kind of weird for me. And so occasionally, I drop in on the landmarks commission and watch it just because I'm goofy like that, so.
That's great. Kaylee?
Yes, yes, I definitely understand the time commitment. My work with the AIA and serving on that board for the last eight years has been a good, I think, preparation for being a part of the more public process. And ultimately, I think I'm very excited to be, hopefully have a chance to be a part of the public side of how Salem continues to develop and ultimately contribute back to the community and what the future of Salem holds. I think we're really ready, I think, to come out of COVID and to hopefully pick up where we left off. You know, there is a lot of momentum and excitement around what Salem looked like and was going to look like. And I think we're all ready to kind of hit the ground running again. And I would love an opportunity to be a part of shaping that future and contribute with the, or in accordance with the current climate action plan. I think that those are really important touchstones to keep at hand.
Hey, thank you, Ron?
Yeah, that time question may have been the simplest question, but it might have been the hardest to answer. I'm fully aware of the time commitments, and I also know that the time is not just sitting in meetings. The time is going through the materials and reading all the background and all the decisions and trying to figure out what questions to ask the staff and maintaining and understanding what codes apply. And so I know it's more than just, it's more than just meetings, and it's a lot of, as city councilors know, it's going through a lot of materials and trying to understand them. Or if you don't understand them, at least trying to figure out the questions to ask. The other thing that happened with me was that after I left the Public Utility Commission, I started doing consulting, and most of it was international. And it was not destination places, it was developing countries. And so I traveled around a lot, and I was not in a position because of all the travel to be that involved in or committed to this kind of activity. But after I retired and I quit calling people for jobs and they quit calling me, and I started to get more involved in local issues and in the neighborhood association, and particularly in a development that was occurring on my street. And been working in that with the Neighborhood Association and on land use issues for several years. And I guess what prompted me was the call, people in the Neighborhood Association came to me and urged me to to apply for the Planning Commission. And given the things I saw going on in Salem and the current timing of the planning review and the activity, it seemed like a really good time to apply for the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you very much. Chris, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for applying for the Planning Commission positions. It's really a critical role, and I'm glad that we have such interested candidates. I would like to just hear from you. What do you see the role of the Planning Commission as it relates to the overall city process and city council and just city government in general? I would like to just hear your thoughts on what you see the role of the Planning Commission.
Ron, go ahead.
Well, as I said in my general opening comments, I see the role pretty critical on citizen involvement. Not only is it a citizen-based panel, but it is also the first place in most cases that has responsibility for overseeing engagement and on the planning process. And it's the place where neighborhood associations and citizens involved in various planning issues, either the large ones or the individual cases in which they go and expect to be heard and listened to. And I see it on the other end as the filter, an advisor to the council. The council can't do all this, and so the Planning Commission provides a filter where it can use its expertise and its own engagement, as well as the engagement that it's encouraged and supported as a filter to make recommendations and provide advice. And I think that advice is on two levels. One, it might be specific instances, but I think, again, I wrote this in my comments and the questions, is I see the role of making decision-making when it is the authority of the commission to make decisions. But also to, and to apply the, either the plan that exists, the code that exists, but also in the course of that, to realize and recognize when changes are needed. Or there's a change in policy, or a change in code, or an issue that needs to be called to the attention. And I think it's their responsibility to take that to the council and identify things that need to be changed, as well as to be the decision-maker or play their designated enforcement role or decision-making on certain land use decisions. And I actually think that the most important thing is being a feedback mechanism and making those decisions to find out things that aren't working, things that aren't addressed, or things that might need to be changed to make the process more efficient or more accessible.
Okay, great, Kaylee?
I think one of the most important components of the Planning Commission is to be essentially a voice for balance and really looking at the future of Salem and always looking back toward to the comprehensive plan, our climate action plan, and taking the feedback from community members who are presenting not only developments for consideration, but also for taking the feedback for people who may be in opposition to that. And the responsibility lies with the Planning Commission to really listen to all of those voices and try and build consensus that aligns with what we see as the vision for what Salem can be. So I think, you know, it's really that, taking it very seriously and knowing that the decisions we're making today will have a very long-term effect on the community and the people who choose to live here.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, so as the, for, on the Planning Commission, I do see, you know, it's an advisory role that is reviewing the different applications for zoning changes and different aspects of land use changes. And like both of the other candidates said, you know, it's an opportunity to, it's an opportunity to represent yourself as well as the city and the citizens of Salem, as well as provide, you know, a little bit of some expertise and thoughtfulness about, you know, the different developments, the different projects that come before the commission. I always said that I, when it came to, when it came to historic preservation, I used to call my, I'd always say that I was a preservation realist versus an idealist. And I think that I'm the same, you know, same way with community development and planning in general is that, you know, I think that everybody has a voice and that everybody has great ideas. And I think it's important to be able to hear all those ideas, but then also to recognize, you know, what's implementable, what is under the purview of the Planning Commission. And to, you know, and to be realistic about things. Because, you know, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of different steps in the process. And if there's anything that I learned from, you know, working on the commission and stuff is just, you know, it's, there's a process. And part of the Planning Commission is to be part of that process, you know, between the public and then in the city when it comes to, you know, community development projects. So, yeah, it's just there, you know, to help make the smarter, you know, smart decisions, take into the different considerations of, you know, all aspects of it, so.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Tom, Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're working forward, moving forward on a climate action plan. And we're gonna take, we're gonna consider it at some aspects tonight. I'd like to, each one of you to discuss how you think the climate action plan proposals and moving forward with the climate action plan, how that fits in with your role on the Planning Commission. And then Kaylee, I would like you, when it's your answer, tell me how long you've lived here in Salem, because we know the other two, we don't know you. So thank you.
Kaylee, why don't you go first?
Sure. So I think I'll start with the how long I've been in Salem. So almost 10 years. I moved here in 2012. Um, I moved here in twenty twelve. Um, and let's see, so the Climate Action Plan, I think you know, there are a lot of good strategies in there currently. Um, and in reviewing it uh just recently, I think one of the largest um impacts and I think maybe one of the lower cost ones uh looking forward is looking at how we handle transportation. Um, and the amenity infrastructure that will be needed to support housing long term as we start to increase density um will play a pretty large role in that. And so uh, for example, the the proposal of utilizing uh parking structures and increasing the amount of uh paid parking downtown. Um, I think will ultimately lead to uh more pedestrian traffic, which ultimately will help to drive uh traffic in front of those businesses who who would benefit from the crap. Um, and I think as a Planning Commission member, you know, it's important to look at um the larger impact of each of the proposed um methods that's currently under consideration and strategies, um as well as looking at the uh the role of resiliency in our in our buildings and how we approach new developments. Are we developing for just the short-term future or are we encouraging developments that will benefit the community in the long term and and preferably give something back to it? Good, I answered your question.
Thank you. Uh Jennifer?
You, um, I work at the Department of Environmental Quality and I work specifically in the wastewater program. Um so um I'm, I've read a little bit about the Climate Action Plan. I've also, you know, it's funny, I hear things from um the public from, you know, because I work with the different permits of of them responding to uh the Climate Action Plan and how uh you know, the different permits, the DEQ uh issues, um how that can play a part of the Climate Action Plan. And um again, like Kaylee also said, you know, I think uh transportation is probably um one of the biggest contributors to, you know, all of our uh the climate emission, there are the air emissions that are that are take that are destroying the environment. And um I think that it'd be, you know, it's important to address the ways that are implementable. My big, my big thing is implementability and what, you know, what is, what is actually tangible and what measures can we take to actually do each and every single one of them? And um honestly, I haven't looked so much at the Climate Action Plan recently, so um but I I do believe that the environment is extremely important. I understand the importance for wastewater, you know, our wastewater infrastructure, um our air quality, which obviously is about emissions with with uh from gases, from uh industries, um automobiles. And um and also the hazardous waste that goes that goes into our ground, that goes up into the air as well as coming down into the, you know, uh creating other things that may not seem um immediate at the time, but as they break down, they do start to create other problems further on down the road. So um I think it's, you know, all around, I I think it's just an important plant that every single community should have. And I think that um the biggest, the biggest part of the Planning Commission is to make sure that we work to make decisions that are implementable and that aren't um just clouds and pies in the sky, so.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, could I have you handle these for a few minutes? Ron's gonna answer this question then.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, my, I guess I'm unmuted. I look at the Climate Action Plan as a critical part of the planning process. But I also recognize that the Climate Action Plan as exist is is really a list of strategies. And that's really all it is. It's a, it's an assessment and it's a list of strategies. And it's gonna be up to the council to pick those things that can that are uh be implemented. And I I think that those I think the focus is on transportation. And um that has a lot, it's transportation and energy to me. And transportation has a lot of aspects to it. And one of the things that strikes me is that when you take all the aspects of the Climate Action Plan, it is how it's integrated to all the other aspects of the goals. You could take uh the Climate Action Plan out of it and all of those other goals would still or the the Climate Action Plan is integrated into everything. It's integrated into housing, it's, you know, and as just as housing and transportation are connected together. You look at things like the the um when you talk about transportation, you talk about what kind of transportation system do you want? Well, you want one, uh even if you don't have climate change goals, you still want the same similar kinds of transportation system. You want a multimodal modal, you want pedestrian access, you want public transit, uh all, you know, the climate action, the climate plan is not the only reason that we're gonna have these transportation goals. So I think it integrates very well. I'll take trees for an example, which uh, you know, there's a, there's a need to increase the tree canopy and that has a climate change goal. However, the value of the tree canopy isn't just climate change. The value of the tree canopy I would uh is is the character of the neighborhood. It's uh other aspects of it. So again, that climate plan is integrated with all other kinds of planning. One of the issues that's a concern to me is whether or not um I, my recommendation has been to the council to make sure that there's a sufficient staff allocation, maybe even a staff person to work with this so that so that it's uh can concentrate and gets get some of this done. And one of the the final thing I'd like to add into one of the aspect, two aspects I'd like to add, one is the solar aspect of it. I believe that uh the Council and Planning Commission, whatever role it has, should be working towards trying to get the one million dollar grants that are available for community solar projects that came out of the legislature. Fifty million dollars allocated to uh out of the general fund to the State Department of or to the Department of Energy. Um, and up to one million dollar grants for communities for uh communities, either tribes or nonprofits for uh community solar projects. And uh the other thing is I, and I'm not sure where everything is on this, but um, I think we ought to be looking at when we have developments and a lot of new housing, what's their orientation? Is there a reason they aren't oriented so that you can't take advantage of solar power? And uh then also, I think because of the environmental impacts uh in past history, you have to apply the uh equity lens, take the Climate Action Plan and use the equity lens uh in that as well as in the other planning uh decisions. So that that's a general overview. There's a lot of strategies, but um, I generally agree with the comments of picking a few strategies, getting them done well. And as a public utility commissioner who got the Oregon Energy Trust started, I really believe in all of those strategies that encourage energy uh efficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Ikas. Counselor Leung?
Thank you. Um, thank you, everyone, for um being here tonight. I have a different question from Kaylee than I do for Ron and Jennifer. So um for Kaylee, um I see that you've attended um at least one Planning Commission meeting. So for you, what was your key take, what are your key takeaways? And for Ron and Jennifer, I do not see that either of you have attended a Planning Commission meeting. So how do you know that this is a commission for you?
I think that um, you know, my key takeaway, I guess, would be that the um it's important to have, as I mentioned earlier, this balanced and and experienced um approach from the members of the Planning Commission. Um, and I think, you know, it's currently, it is uh broadly, I'm I'm not sure of the background of every person on the Planning Commission right now, but I think it's important to have different voices uh from different backgrounds, different perspectives um with the technical expertise to to weigh in on the projects um and developments being presented. And I think that that's where I would be able to bring a technical expertise um with regard to uh sustainability, resiliency, and uh generally the built environment with uh with my experience as an architect and uh having worked on projects in a variety of areas throughout Salem.
You want me to go next?
Thank you, yes. And if you can keep your answer fairly brief, Mr. Ikas, we're kind of getting down to the end of our time.
Hey, I I have not attended Planning Commission meetings because the two primary activities that I participated in actually went to the City Council rather than the Planning Commission. And they went to the Parks and Recreation Board instead of the Planning Commission. Uh, and as far as my participation in the Neighborhood Association, it's usually been someone else. The head of the Land Use Committee or the head of the um transportation or head of the Neighborhood Association that's attended the meetings. And uh my other answers, I think, have addressed why I'm interested and and think this works for me.
Thank you, Mr. Ikas, and uh did all three of you get? I'm sorry, thank you. I was thinking I didn't get one. Go ahead.
No worries. Um, no, I have not been to a Planning Commission meeting. It's actually um part of, it's it's a con- it was a conflict with my son's soccer, but now I have a da- a child that drives, so I have much more freedom having a a teenager that volunteer volunteers to bring her little brother to soccer. So um like I said earlier, I have a background in urban planning and historic preservation and I've been on a commission with the city for over five years as well as subcommittees and also um experience being uh a commissioner in West Chicago, Illinois. So um my in, I my interests as well as my um in my my interest in in urban planning and community development as well as my interest in um participating in my local government um I think speaks to why I'm interested.
Thank you. Do other councillors have questions or do we feel like we have enough information? Counselor Gonzalez?
Just um two uh two quick questions. And yeah, there should be quick answers. The first one is um describe Salem in twenty thirty, just in a few sentences. And uh, you know, Ron uh did touch on the equity issue, so Jennifer and Kaylee, I'd like to hear from you. How you balance, how you uh incorporate equity in your planning. Um, we do have the Climate Action Plan, but we have car-dependent people. The people that can't work from home, that can't zoom from home, they're the ones that put food on the table. They drive to the canneries, to their uh landscaping jobs. You know, so how do we not push these people out with gentrification?
Well, um, and I just had a brain fart now, I'm sorry. Kaylee, can you go, please? I apologize.
Kaylee, would you mind going first?
Of course, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so my um how I see Salem in twenty thirty, um I think is an interesting question because uh primarily it it really depends on the decisions that we make today, right? And how we approach development, how we um encourage um a sustainable and thoughtful approach to um new projects, how we, you know, bring more people into the city. And uh I think there was, uh if you remember when we had the eclipse here, uh that was, I think, a pretty interesting moment to see Salem in a in kind of a different light. There are a lot of different people downtown and I would be interested to know how that affected uh the businesses downtown and and I think it, you know, highlighted some opportunities um as well as the infrastructure needed to to grow the city. You know, and that was, that was momentary, but I think it was kind of an exciting uh vision for, you know, how how things might shift. Um, and then as far as equity, uh I think representation is is critical. You know, we can't decide things for people without actually asking them how it affects them and what their vision is for our city. So generally speaking, I, you know, I think we need to encourage um people from all areas throughout the city, um from different backgrounds, different uh professions and and really find out what it is they see for that future and and how we can encourage more people to move here. Because it's really, it's a really great place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you ready to take over? If you are, I think we have two more people to respond to this question.
Yes, uh Jennifer, you wanna go ahead and then uh who who's left? Who has, uh Virginia and Vanessa, are you the two left that haven't asked questions? Do you have a burning desire to ask a question? Okay, you do then, Vanessa, because I'll call on you. I just wanna find out if if you mind if we go past you. But I'll call.
Yeah, I'd know, I'd be quick on Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me let Jennifer answer this question and then we'll come right back to you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, sorry for my my little brain lapse right there. Um, twenty thirty, I think um Salem is gonna be more connected and um and more, I think that they'll be more, it'll be more walkable. I think it'll be just more connected um with transportation. And when it comes to um be being in twenty thirty and then also the environmental, the equity lens, um I'm on the Environmental Justice Working Group um in on in DEQ and um actually, one of our, one of our goals is to come up with a definition of environmental justice that, you know, that um suits a local government or a state, you know, a state agency um and apply to everybody because uh, you know, environmental justice uh and it means many things to different people. And um and I think that the biggest thing is uh ties in with what Ron had said earlier about the Climate Action Plan. And I think that, you know, an equity lens should be, you know, which ties into environmental justice. I think that that's something that should be part of every single planning decision that the city makes. So every, you know, every land use decision, you know, has some kind of component of that's have has already taken into that those those issues of of equity and climate action and that it's not an afterthought. And I I think that it's important for it to be all integrated inside. And um and again, like Kaylee also said, you know, what Salem's gonna be in twenty thirty is all about what we do now. And um I'd like to see that it stays, you know, the and grows to be as vibrant as I've seen it grow in the last nine years that I've been here. And um coming from the Midwest and outside of Chicago, you know, moving to Oregon was a a real shocker for me. I'd only been to Portland. So um, so yeah, I just think that um I think that Salem has so many great, has great infrastructure and it really, we, it's up, it's up to the Planning Commission and City Council and all of our commissions to really be an active part of that.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, The Statesman Journal reported that Salem has become extremely unaffordable over the last ten years. We used to be the eighty-fifth most affordable market nationally, and to now we rank two hundred and thirteen out of two hundred and thirty-eight cities just in the last ten years. In two sentences-ish, what role can the Planning Commission play in incentivizing more affordable housing?
Jennifer, go ahead.
I think that we need to be smart and um not go on, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, like, this is, it takes me a while to think of my answers sometimes. Um, can I answer in a second? Thank you, I'm sorry.
I believe the mayor is otherwise occupied, so yes, that that'll be no problem. Mr. Ikas, would you like to go now?
Well, I think the key is having more, not just having more housing, but having more affordable housing. And the key to that is uh making sure you have lots of housing options, uh everything from uh that and and using infill uh and everything from tiny houses to multifamily houses, uh middle housing. But uh every time there's a housing development, I think the question ought to be asked, is this, is this promoting affordable housing? Not just by having more expensive housing to have more housing, but by uh housing that has access to people. And I think you also need to take into account all the other costs. If you have higher housing costs, and you still have higher transportation costs, those kinds of things. And it costs more to get to the services and within the community, those kinds of things are also going to affect the affordability, not just the cost of the housing. So I think more housing options, more infill, closer to services, reducing other costs such as transportation. I think energy efficiency frankly is a major part of the cost of housing, not just the the price of the house. So those are some of some of the things I'd answer that. It's probably a lot longer. Answer is needed for the question.
Ron, not too. Jennifer, what have you got for us?
What I want to say is, you know, I think when it comes to affordable housing, one aspect that also ties into the Climate Action Plan is also re is reusing what we already have. They there's a guy named Carl Elafont, and he said the greenest building is the one that already is up is already built. And I think that I think it's important to you to use what we already have to try to make more affordable housing, you know. In addition, I do understand that, you know, we do need to have newer newer developments and stuff, but I do believe that it's important to reuse what we already have. And then also to have smart infill, as Ron was saying with, but it needs to be smart infill with, you know, taking into consideration, you know, the location and talking to the community, actually, you know, talking to the community that's, you know, where where that's happening. So, yeah, we need, you know, we need, we need affordable housing. I don't think we always necessarily need to start with something brand new. I think that we have a lot that already exists in our in our community. So I think that we can tie so many things together with that.
Okay. Now, Kaylee, did you have a chance to answer this?
I have not. I can be brief. I think that one of the, one of the aspects of this is it's not just the housing. It's the the infrastructure and amenities that can support housing for those who maybe don't have a car and need to be able to walk. You know, we need to be able to provide childcare in approximate distance to affordable housing. And we should find opportunities to provide groceries and affordable groceries that are maybe within walking distance or, you know, an easy bikeable distance. And in addition to that, there are some really great examples of middle housing actually throughout Salem that I don't think is currently viable with our with our current codes. And I think that those can be maybe a precedent for some opportunities in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I'm going to, Amy, do you want to come on and kind of explain to us what our process looks like here? Or Dan?
I I don't think the recorder's on the call right now, but essentially you'll be moving to deliberations and and deciding on the appointments at the council meeting that's going to be coming up here in a few minutes. Mr. Mayor, you can call the item up when it comes up on the agenda. And then the recorder will go around to each council member, and they will be able to name the two names they want for appointments.
Where will this come up on the agenda then?
Right at the beginning.
At the 1A?
Yes.
Okay, I see it then. Okay. Okay, very good. So I call on Amy.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And just as a reminder, everyone, sorry, Mr. Mayor, as a reminder, we'll have to exit this meeting and then enter a new Zoom link to get to the city council meeting.
And we've got, we've got a couple of minutes before we need to do that. So if you have anything you need to do, we'll reconvene at 6 o'clock. Again, to the three of you, thank you very much. Very informative, very thoughtful. And we'll look forward to completing this right out of the chute so you can find out whether you are or are not going to be obligated on Tuesday evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ah, okay, thank you very much. Welcome to the Salem City Council. This is our meeting for Monday, February 14, Valentine's Day. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the recorder to please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, please run me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is a follow-up on our sort of pre-session work. We're going to be voting on plant new Planning Commission members. We have two full terms available. We have interviewed five different people in two different sessions. So we'll go ahead. Amy, is it you who will take us through this?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Thank you. So when your name is called, please state the names of the two candidates that you are voting for, and we'll start with Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. Kaylee Faat and Ron Anderson. Sorry, Ron Ikas.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson. I believe you're muted.
I am not anymore. Ron Ikas, Kaylee Faat.
Counselor Phillips?
Uh, yes, Ron Ikas and Kaylee Faat.
All right, Counselor Leung?
Hello, Kaylee Faat and Ron Ikas.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Jordan Truitt, Logan Lor.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Ron Ikas and Jordan Truitt.
Counselor Nordike?
Ron Ikas and Kaylee Faat.
All right, and Mayor Bennett?
Uh, Jordan Truitt and Kaylee Faat.
Okay, so we have Kaylee Faat and Ron Ikas each with six votes. So they will be appointed to the Planning Commission for full terms expiring December 31, 2025.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we will move to our next item. Do you have any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. And it's time then for council and city manager comments. I'm going to, I'll I'll start off. I want to let you know that Jim Lewis has resigned from the city council as of yesterday at 11:40. He sent me this, he sent us, not me, he sent us this letter. It's been a great, it is with great sadness and disappointment that I must submit my resignation from the Salem City Council. Lingering medical issues, family obligations, and celebrations are keeping me from fulfilling my obligations to the position of city councillor. I want to thank the city of Salem, especially the residents of West Salem, for giving me the opportunity to serve my community. I wish everyone the best, and may God bless the city of Salem. Thanks, Jim. Jim Lewis, Salem City Council Ward Eight. So we will now be moving forward then to replace Jim. And I'm going to call on Dan Acheson to kind of give us a we haven't done this for quite a while. So Dan, what what comes next now?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dan Acheson, City Attorney. So according to the charter, if there's less than a year from the next primary election, council would would make the appointment, the primary courses in May. So it's an appointment appointment to the to a position, Ward Eight. What the next step would be, and you can do this tonight, would be to make a motion to declare the seat vacant, because the the seat doesn't become vacant upon a resignation until the council declares it. At that point, the city could post, announce the vacancy and post it on the website and start the process of accepting applications for it.
Very good. And I, would I be out of order just getting that motion behind us then to declare the seat vacant?
No, you're fine to make that now if you'd like.
Okay. I move the Salem City Council accept Jim Lewis's resignation, declares the Ward Eight seat vacant, and proceeds with filling that seat as soon as possible.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion, questions? Kay, if the recorder, please call.
Do you have a question, Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Who am I seeing?
Hoy.
Oh, Hoy, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Uh, Mr. Acheson, just to clarify, will this, the appointment come from the old Ward Eight or the new Ward Eight? I think that's important for people who might be considering applying, just so we're really clear about that.
I may ask the city recorder to to check my math on this, but I believe it's the new Ward Boundaries.
Yes, it would be the new Ward Boundaries.
Thank you.
And we would be looking, like I said, we'd look at this very rapidly. I'm hoping we would have our our applications completed by March 8 and be able to move through this with interviews if needed and a vote to get that councillor back, get a councillor in place. So that's kind of my expectation. Kay, can?
Mr. Mayor, it's not directly applicable to the motion, but I have a few other things to add to that once you vote.
Okay. Ready to vote then? Amy, would you call the roll then, please?
Yes. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I I do want to just personally say I'm sorry, we're losing Counselor Lewis with really less than a year to go, but I certainly understandable in talking with him and we don't do this very often. I know I came onto the council initially 15 years ago, replacing a councillor who's where health issues demanded his attention. So I I think it's good to give the person who's coming on a chance to kind of get rolling. Dan, what would you like to take us?
Just to talk about process for a minute, you had mentioned March 8 for a deadline for applications. That coincides with the the date that the candidate filings would be due. So at that point, we would know if there's any candidates who have filed and qualified for the ballot. What we could do after that point is schedule a special council meeting on March 21 for council to do interviews for the folks who have submitted applications. And then potentially council could appoint a new councillor for that ward on March 28.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, any any questions at all? So if you know someone who wants to be on the city council, let them know now's the time to get their name in. I've spoken with Mickey Varney at an event over the weekend, and she had indicated she'll be applying. Mickey, if you recall, ran a few against Lewis a few years ago, and serves now on the Parks Board, and she has indicated she'll be applying to run for the office. So I think we will have at least right now one candidate. If any of you have any others, feel free to go out and recruit or do whatever you'd like to do. But I think it's an opportunity that folks would find interesting. Okay. Now, counsel comments. Counselor Hoy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just wanted to take a second and thank Counselor Lewis. I know he's not here, but maybe this word will get to him. I'll certainly reach out to him individually. I just want to thank him for his service to the citizens of Salem and for his time on Salem City Council. I appreciate it, and I wish him all the best.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm joining the discussion of Counselor Lewis. I found out this morning that he had resigned, and I have called him and left a message and appreciating his service. And it's no secret that he and I were often on opposite sides of many issues. But throughout the entire time that we have served on the council together, we have always treated each other with respect and appreciation for the work we that we are each doing and our common goal of and our common goal of serving the City of Salem. So I want to thank Council Lewis and wish him well in the future.
Great. Council Stapleton?
Thank you. Yes, I'll join Councilers Anderson and Hoy and, and you, Mayor Bennett, and thanking Jim for his service, and of course, I haven't gotten to serve with him as long as some of you, but we did share in West Salem, and so he and I have spent many, many hours together outside of council, getting to know each other personally, and so I feel as though I'm losing a friend as well on the council and just wish him all the best of luck in, in whatever future endeavors he has and just thank you so much for your friendship, Jim, and for your service and look forward to reaching out to you and connecting with you personally. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my fellow colleagues, I'd also like to thank Council Lewis for his time on serving on council, and like several others, Council Lewis and I also did not always agree with one another, but in the end, we were always cordial and respectful of one another by the end of the day. And every so often when I would, you know, when we were still in, in person, meeting in session, you know, sometimes we joke with each other and, you know, I, I will miss that. So thank you, Council Lewis, and I wish you the very best.
Great, thank you. Council Gonzalez?
Gracias, Mayor. My name is Jose Gonzalez. You know, I introduced myself in Spanish. I mean, in a different language to highlight our city's long-time diversity, and today I use good old-fashioned Mexican Spanish. So I'll say gracias, Jim. Thank you for serving. I, like I tell people, it's a different process when it's your name on the sign. The other reason I also wanted to highlight Spanish is because today Valentine's Day is my parents' 50th wedding, 57th wedding anniversary. Felicitaciones. Two more things. Had an accident in downtown Salem yesterday. Luckily, no major injuries. I'm here. We were driving under 20. But I wanted to take this moment to thank the fire department. They got there so fast, we were wondering if they were just parked around the corner. I mean, literally, we thought they were just right around the corner. They saw we're okay, but still, they, they do other things. They went out there, they picked up the car parts, they poured some powder, they cleaned up the liquids, you know, they were just super efficient, you know, congrats. And very impressed. The police arrived a few minutes later, very helpful. One of them was a trainee, was her first police accident report. I don't know if to be happier. It was a funny moment to be happy, but, you know, they did a great job. The only, the only negative through the process was the towing company committed, the contract, I guess, committed to 20 minutes for them to arrive. It took 50, you know, but other than that, we're safe, we're, you know, car is just parts, but we're alive. And the last thing, I just wanted to share, what I've noticed has become part of every single conversation I have with people in my ward, and that's just the garbage leftover from the unmanaged camping. You know, and it seems like their concern is really increasing because of what they see in Portland, you know, what, what the city was and what the city is today. And, you know, I can see it in their eyes, you know, they're, they're also wondering if it's too late for Salem, you know, and I've told them it's not, but that's their concern, so thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Okay, Council Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I'd like to join you and, and all the other councilors in really wishing the best to Council Lewis. You know, I think he was a real, true independent voice for Salem, and I, I do appreciate his experience and, and years of service, public service. You know, I was the alternate on the SCATS MPO, and, and I got to see his leadership firsthand, because he was, I believe, the vice chair of that committee. So, you know, he'll be deeply missed, and I'll, I'll try to reach out to him. But, you know, I appreciate the announcement tonight. You know, personally, I do, I am wearing a red tie in honor of it being Valentine's today, like to wish you a Happy Valentine's Day, not just to Michelle, but to all of our family members, you know, who, who sacrifice. You know, it takes a lot for all of us to be here consistently, you know, multiple times a month, and city staff as well. And then, you know, in, in honor of, you know, the, the heart in, in general, I, as a doctor, I really would like to take this time to encourage people to donate blood. It's pretty straightforward. You can just go to redcrossblood.org, and then, you know, you can see in their words, they're describing this is the worst blood shortage in over a decade, and they're saying specifically it's a national blood crisis. In some communities, it's starting to impact, you know, planned procedures and delay patient care. I think that we've done a great job locally, but, you know, we're not, we're part of the same nation where there's a crisis, so please, if you can, go donate blood. And then, you know, beyond that, my, my educated guess, based on what's published on the, the American Red Cross website, is that, you know, some of this has to do with the pandemic. And, and, you know, I typically talk about the pandemic, so, you know, if people are concerned or scared to go out of their house to donate blood, you'll be fine as long as you wear a mask, like a three-ply mask or a well-fitted K95 mask or better. You know, you'll, you are protected, especially if you've been fully vaccinated and/or boosted. Please don't let that dissuade you from, from donating blood. Specifically, when it comes to vaccinations, I do want to bring people's attention to the fact that there, there are services available once again at the, the state fairgrounds. It's my understanding, according to what's published on the Oregon Health Authority, social media and website, that they will be having testing available, and it does not require an appointment. You can register in advance, and all you have to do is go to the Oregon Health Authority and, and search for, you know, COVID-19 or vaccines. What I'm reading here is that it's available through March 1st, Monday through Saturday, from 7, from noon until 7:00 PM, and then on Su-, on Sundays, it's from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. So again, you can get tested and you, all three vaccines are available. You do not have to register in advance, but you can. So I would encourage everybody to get vaccinated and boosted and wear a ma-, a mask when they're outside of their house. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Council Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll join my colleagues in sending a phone farewell to Jim Lewis. Council Lewis, wherever you are, I sincerely appreciate my time working with you. You were always willing to work across the aisle. I really will miss our coffee appointments together because you were just willing to listen and willing to talk, even if we don't see eye to eye on everything. That willingness to agree to disagree is something that is treasured and valued very highly in my own profession. And so I appreciate it when others are willing to do that, no matter what their background is or where they ultimately cast their vote. So I think that's the kind of professionalism that I truly, truly value and will miss. So thank you so much, Council Lewis, for your many, many years of service to our community, and I know our paths will continue to cross in our relatively small town. The other thing that I wanted to update folks on, I had my first meeting with the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission, and there were some valuable takeaways from that that I wanted to share briefly. We heard from the Oregon Health Authority that about 30% of unintentional overdose deaths in the year 2020 happened to persons with a diagnosis of some form of mental illness. 30% of unintentional overdoses had a mental illness. The OHA also found that less than 10%, in fact, less than 9% of Oregonians who died from an unintentional drug overdose in 2020 were receiving treatment at the time for mental health or substance use. That's an abysmally low number, and it just goes to show the profound need for our entire state to step up in terms of drug treatment and mental health services. Cities like ours are often left holding the bag when we don't have adequate levels of services provided above our pay grade or authorization or, of course, our funding opportunities. They also found that 14% of these unintentional overdose fatalities occurred among people experiencing houselessness. And about seven, let's see, about 2.7% were receiving current treatment through substance use disorder. So this is not a pretty picture, folks, but I wanted to share these takeaways from the APDC because these things will impact us one way or the other, and it just goes to show the importance of ensuring that we have mental health options across our community in order to prevent as many of these tragedies from happening as possible. On a more uplifting note, I wanted to try and end on a, a little more positive note. I really want to thank the city staff for moving quickly to respond to citizen concerns about the state of the parking lot at Minnow Brown. Minnow Brown may be in my ward, and it was one of the parks that I used heavily as a child, but we really attract people from all over the city and beyond. It is one of the crown jewels of Salem, in my humble opinion. And so the simple act of spreading gravel in a parking lot doesn't sound like much, but it's important for people to get their cars in and out of that parking lot safely. It's important for people with mobility issues. It's important for people to enjoy our parks and have a place where they can take their dogs off-leash safely. So thank you, city staff, for all that you do, and particularly in this case. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I want to, I have one thing I want to mention. I really want to thank the city public work staff for putting in the pedestrian safety crossing at 13th and Marion. There's actually two crosswalks there. I began talking with the city about this about 10 years ago, and I was just thrilled to see it recently open up. It's got flashing lights, it's crosswalk. This is at that point where you cross mainly students from North Salem, but also people from the neighborhood. Northeast neighbors cross 13th and cross Marion to get to Safeway. And it was one of those spots that I can remember being told that just wasn't going to work because it was such an important place for traffic to move through freely as they pass through town, and it, it appears to be working quite well. So Mr. Powers and, and Mr. Fernandez, thank you very much for getting that one in place. The only thing I'm missing, I really want to just put in one last plug, that I'd really love to see the completion of Two-Waying State Street before I die, rather than leave. Tom and I have been working on this for some time, but I, I know I began working on it about the same time I started talking about that crosswalk, and it, it's, it has progressed about five blocks, six blocks. I'm pretty, pretty thrilled with those, but we got more to go, don't we, Tom, I think? So, thank you. Council Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a few other items I just kind of wanted to bring to councilor's attention as well as just discuss if anything. So last week, there was quite a few number of car accidents, but there was a horrendous car accident on Owen Street that resulted in death to one of the drivers. I understand this is still under investigation and that they may have been due to a emergency medical condition. I still want to offer my condolences to the family and also for a safe recovery for the other drivers who were injured during this accident. And second, I'd like to say a big thank you to not only Public Works Director Fernandez, as also Chief Womack, for once again putting out speed trackers on Mildred near Lone Oak. That has been an ongoing issue since I've been on council, and I'm glad that there was a speed tracker that was placed out there for a good week, and I'm looking forward to seeing the report when it's ready and having a discussion on what we can do to address speed within that particular area. In addition, I also want to give a shout out to one of our local businesses, Epilogue Kitchen and Cocktails, one of Salem's very few black-owned businesses. Epilogue was doing a community fundraiser, or still is, for Free Fridge Salem. It, this is going on actually right now until 7:00 PM. They're selling a ton of baked goods and sweets, so we, Salem City Councilors are going to miss out on the goods. People who are watching, stop on by, pick up some sweets to eat and donate, and, you know, donate for a good cause. And last, I kind of wanted to direct this to attention of, of Chief Womack. So councilors, or at least I am, have been receiving emails and text messages regarding an upcoming event in March that's happening on March 18th called the Occupy Oregon Freedom Convoy. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'm happy to follow with you after council to talk more about it, because I've been getting quite a few messages from concerned committee members. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Ah, sorry, Mr. Powers.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, Council. In my remaining two weeks, I will do my best to expedite the remaining section of State Street you've been waiting so patiently for.
I really have. I really, thank you.
On, on behalf of staff, I, I want to thank Jim Lewis for his years of volunteer service, first at the Planning Commission and then on City Council. Jim was a courageous representative for, for West Salem and, and for the city, looking at the ward first, but then really looking at what was in the best interest of the entire city, and we're very grateful for Jim always being there to put the time in, to ask questions of staff, to hold staff accountable with our information, and, and, and more often than not, ending the, the conversation with the Jimmy Buffett quote. So we'll, we'll, we'll miss Jim. I want to recognize Council Leon for, for reminding me the other day of, of the importance of really remembering the individuals that are homeless. So often with council and at these meetings, we're talking about big dollars and groups of people we're trying to help, and we can lose sight of trying to help the individual, the individual person who's leaning up against a building somewhere. And I was asked to provide information on how we all, as, as residents of Salem, can help those who are unhoused by trying to connect them with the outreach experts that we have. We rely on two agencies for that initial outreach. The first is Arches, and the second is Northwest Human Services, and there's information at both of those organizations' websites on how individuals can, can make sure those staff who go out into the community are aware of, of unhoused individuals, and we'd certainly rather err on the side of, of being told, they would err on the side of being told about an individual than, than having someone slip through the cracks. So thank you, Council Leon, and, and we'll, we'll push that information out in one of our, one of our next updates, homeless updates. And then last, on Tuesday, February 22nd, that is a Tuesday because of the presidential holiday, you will be having a special meeting to discuss and approve the position, profile, and process for recruiting and selecting a, a city manager. And, and we will have packet material out to you later this week. It is a, it is a special meeting. It will be a business meeting of council, and there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on, on the profile and, and the process. Thank you.
Great, thank you. How will the, Mr. Powers, how will the public be able to access inform, that information? How will that be made available to the public? What our process and what our parameters look like for this job?
We'll, we'll provide that through our, our, our normal distribution ways, through the, the, how we share agenda items, and we can certainly also highlight it on our, our social media, but primarily it'll be through our, sharing the agenda material with the public as we do for this meeting and as we do for work sessions.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, that completes that part of the agenda. Why don't we move then to the consent calendar? Think I've got that right?
We do have public comments.
Comment, I do have public comment, don't I? Just a second here. Okay, Lori Doherty. Three minutes. And we'll cut you off. Thanks, Lori.
Okay. Mayor Bennett and, and city councilors, my name is Lori Doherty. I live in Ward One. I am a member of 350 Salem, Oregon, the local chapter of International Climate Justice Network, 350.org. I'm here to support Councilor Anderson's Resolution 5B to hold a public hearing and council deliberation on the draft climate action plan as soon as possible. A little over five years ago, I made a presentation, a short presentation to our 350 chapter on why Salem needs a climate action plan. This was five years ago. I still have the outline on my laptop. Cities, including cities in Oregon, were taking measures to confront the climate crisis. Focusing mainly on Oregon, we began researching what other cities were doing. At the same time, Salem embarked on a, a new strategic plan process. We saw that as an opportunity to make climate action a Salem priority. So we engaged with the strategic plan effort, showing up at council meetings, work sessions, work, community workshops, and we met with city councilors and staff to share what we had learned about cities and climate change. The strategic plan opened the way for a cap, but also opened up a revision of the Long Range Comprehensive Plan for Growth and Development known as our Salem. How and where our city develops impacts transportation options and energy use, the main factors in our greenhouse gas emissions. So we dug deep into our Salem and engaged with that process also. We also track planning, zoning, and budget issues. Our members are activists and policy analysts. We educate ourselves and our supporters. We show up and we don't quit. We know we are up against powerful interests who are determined to maintain business as usual, meaning a free hand for fossil fuels, development without constraints, and pandering to our car culture. Business as usual gets us wildfires, excessive heat and drought interrupted by powerful storms, high winds, and flooding. Salem has a choice. We can continue with business as usual, or we can transform our city into one that is safer, cleaner, healthier, and prepared to weather the impacts of climate change that are already happening. Mayor Bennett, I was appalled but not surprised that in your recent state of the city address, you neglected even mentioning climate change or the climate action plan. This is an insult to those who have worked long and hard to develop the cap and to the people of this community who deserve a chance to give the cap a fair hearing. You align yourself with the forces of business as usual. You're on the wrong side of history. The cap is just not, is not just a random collection of actions ripe for cherry picking. It systematically examines how climate change is affecting our lives and our community. It offers a set of policies and practices to confront this crisis with fairness, commitment, and bold imagination. Counselors, I urge you to just look up with courage and awareness and say yes to Counselor Anderson's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Phil Carver.
Thank you, Commissioner, council members, and Mr. Mayor. I'm here representing 350 Salem, and I'd like to read you a line from the agenda item that follows Committee Council Member Anderson's, and it's the policy agenda for the council and the city. And in item number two, it has a bulleted list of actions related to the work, that the major action items related to planning coming up. And it has update the transportation system plan, conduct a goal five inventory. And then the third one is coordinate and implement strategies. And here I'm quoting, "strategies in the climate action plan following public hearing and approval." So, it has the city staff in the same agenda that you are, that, then the following agenda item for the Counselor Anderson's motion clearly makes the, this, this has always been the intention, and the task force members were under the understanding that the, the climate action plan would be approved by the city council, and there would be a public hearing to discuss the various measures. Public hearings like that are not just decision-making tools or communication tools. And by denying a public hearing, you're not just changing the decision-making process, you're denying the, the community an opportunity to have a dialogue, an open and fair dialogue where rumors and innuendos can be disputed and, and rebutted. And if you just accept the plan without a public hearing, you will not do that. And if you just accept the plan, you are kowtowing and really cowering and to, to extortion by certain members of the business community who are threatening the bond measure. And that is, that is severely disappointing. I'm really disappointed that you would not stand up and show courage when a time when courage is very necessary. The bond issue is highly popular and will likely pass in any case. So, I encourage you to support Counselor Anderson's motion and hold a public hearing at the earliest opportunity and then approve or adopt the, the climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Janet Lorenzen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett and city councilors. I'm also addressing 5B. I am Professor Janet Lorenzen. I live in Ward 3. I was a member of the Salem City, the Salem Climate Action Plan Task Force. You asked for community members to give input on climate and resiliency, and I answered that call and volunteered my time during my sabbatical. We were guided by the council, council's goal of reducing emissions by 50% by 2035 and becoming carbon neutral by 2050. Overall, cities have done more to address climate change than states or the federal government. So, it's really the responsibility of cities to address climate change. They're not, you know, kind of out of this fight. They're not, there's no such thing as too small because it's really the cities that have made more progress than at any other level in the United States. Frankly, this was a lot of work. We held extra meetings that weren't on the original agenda, and we delivered 180, 180 strategies to reduce pollution and increase equity, safety, and resiliency. So, I'm asking that you please respect our effort and the voices of the public by holding a public hearing and voting on the climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We will then, I have, with your permission, I have one other person scheduled who would like to speak to the council on an issue not on the agenda. I'd like to have him come up so they don't have to wait all night, if you don't mind. Is there any objection? Okay, Mr. Alex Stein. Unless Alex waiting, thinks he has to wait longer.
I'm not sure that Mr. Stein is still in the meeting. It does not appear.
Was he here, Courtney?
Uh, yes, but it does not appear as though Alex is still in the meeting.
Well, I need to call him at the end of the meeting.
I'll let you know if he appears.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward then to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3A pulled by Counselor Anderson.
Is it 3.3A?
I apologize. It is 3.3A, yes.
Okay. I've had it written down wrong. I thought it was 3.2A.
I'll second. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I got it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That leaves us with 3.1A, the January 18th, 2022 draft city council work session minutes, 3.1B, January 24th, 2022 draft city council minutes, 3.2A, transfers of appropriation within general fund and utility fund for fiscal year 2022 budgets, 3.2B, consideration of fee waiver policy, 3.3B, fire management compensation, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay. Any discussion on these? Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My apologies for not catching this earlier, but we need to do planning commission appointments.
We did them, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
My apologies.
No, no, that's okay. I thought we did. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move ahead then, okay? So, we'll go to Special Orders of Business, 5A. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. I move the city council direct staff to bring back for council's consideration and implementation plan for a 20 is plenty program that would reduce speed limits on local residential streets from 25 to 20 miles per hour citywide. The plan should include a public hearing and a robust communications plan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you. So, this is a project that I've been working on this past year with another member of the Grant Neighborhood Association. And I always love folks who are in my ward who are so publicly active and engaged in certain topics and willing to do the work. And some of these members have been going to neighborhood associations. I believe we've been to 10 now out of the 18 and have only gotten a really positive response to this idea. And in talking with some of my council members, this is where the idea of a public hearing came forward, is that we haven't gotten to all 18 of the neighbor associations. And so, in order to really open this up to the community as a whole and really get everybody's feedback on this idea of reducing our speed limits in our, in our residential areas, we would, we would love to move forward with a, with a public hearing. And then also just really focus in on how we can get a really great communication plan because, as you all know, not everybody in our community is really engaged in the day-to-day of the city council or city staff. And so, how can we use this opportunity to educate our community members on the importance of reducing speed limit, especially in areas of the city where folks who are walking, folks who are choosing to ride their bikes may come in close contact with vehicles. And this is a tool that the state has offered up to us as cities, and we can utilize it to help bring another layer of safety. And I know that there's gonna be conversations about, you know, the folks that aren't gonna comply, but a lot of people will, and that's really important. And as I'll say 100 times here, elevating neighborhoods is gonna be a, a constant theme of mine here on city council. So, I really hope that I have your support in this and we could move forward and, and really, I think, do something great for our neighborhoods.
Okay, any discussion? Just, I, I just wanna mention a couple of things to you. One, you, we've lowered the speed limit on 17th Street to 25, so it now runs between about 35 and 50. And with no, not a slowdown there. I got out, I was getting out of my car this morning on 16th Street, one of the streets that would become 20, which is, I think, great, would be absolutely great, and dodged a car coming through at about 45. The thing that, and I, and it was a neighbor, okay, someone who lives on the street. The concern I've got, and, and I'd like to see how this will fit into the discussion, is we now have six traffic patrol officers in this city. Will part of your plan include some sort of enforcement? Because I think people think because it says 20, people will actually do it. And I, I just gotta be honest with you, I've never seen that work. And I wondered, will, will you be also supporting then the in, in police officers we desperately need in this city to get traffic under control, to save the lives of pedestrians, to save the lives of drivers, as was described by Counselor Leon over on Owens? Do you see what?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for the question. And I think there's so many different ways that we can approach this. You know, I think you and I talked about 17th Street and how we really longed to have that really have a, a better effect and result. And I think that the, what was lacking so much there was an education campaign and the fact that we haven't done anything to change the design of the street itself. So, we still have really wide lanes. And so, I, I would hope to look at all the different ways that we could help change behavior, not only through design, through different enforcement mechanisms and a robust enforcement in, in our police department and all of the different ways that we're gonna help bring safety to our streets. So, I think all of that is on the table. And I'm not sure how adding more police officers as far as the budget goes and how that works with the 20 is plenty campaign, obviously, two very different conversations. But I think that they are both linked together and important as far as how are we gonna design streets? How are we gonna use enforcement in different ways to gain compliance? And how are we gonna educate the public on, on why we want them to go 20 miles an hour in the residential streets? So.
Well, I will assure you enforcement is part of that discussion. It's not an unrelated topic. Unless you can figure out how to expl, my streets narrow.
Yes, I understand that. And I, I think what I'm saying-
All the streets we're talking about are narrow streets. They're, they're residential streets. So, it's not, I don't know if you make them more narrow, but it'll be interesting to hear, hear the discussion, see what the staff can come up with. Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, I mean, I, I am supportive of this motion, moving the conversation forward. I mean, to be really clear, yes, I support hiring more police. I mean, I think at a minimum, we need to hire at least six new FTEs as sworn officers. I think there's, there's broad agreement amongst leadership and city staff. And my guess, educated guess, I can't speak for, for my fellow counselors, but that will likely be supported. I mean, I think the data shows that we're, you know, short by 30 to 60 officers. You know, getting to where we need to go there is gonna be challenging without, you know, raising new revenues. So, we're gonna have to tackle this, you know, from every facet. I think that, you know, personally, I, I feel like we should use more of the, the intersections where we have the cameras that'll, that'll catch you not just running a red light, but speeding. You know, it's my opinion that, you know, based on data, we, we decrease deaths and accidents by having those things. So, I'm in favor of enforcement mechanisms. But in the short term, you know, it may only be, you know, 3% to 5% of people that voluntarily comply with driving at a slower rate, but I think that that will save lives. Yes, there may be a trade-off in terms of frustration because some people drive, you know, the 20 that we're asking them to in the smaller neighborhoods. And then some people don't. But in the short term, I'm, I'm not willing to postpone saving lives if we can get people to voluntarily comply in the short term. But I do agree that enforcement, you know, needs to be discussed, and I'm, I am certainly in favor of expanding officer FTEs and am willing to vote on raising revenue if that's what it takes. So, yes, I support this motion. Let's continue the conversation.
I do too. I just don't wanna just do feel-good stuff. I hope we will go into some stubs and some of this as well. That's all.
And then just, you know, like my experience of the two major neighborhood associations that I attend on the regular, that the one neighborhood association, to the best of my recollection, supported it unanimously. And I think Morningside may not have yet had a presentation. So, like Counselor Stapleton has said, this is surprisingly popular. There are people who have some questions about enforcement and other aspects of it, but I think everybody, you know, can kinda take a step back and understand that, like, speed kills. So, if we drive just a bit slower, we're not talking 5 miles an hour or zero, just 20 miles an hour, that can really save lives.
Counselor Hoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to voice my support for this motion as well. And I'm not doing it because I think it makes people feel good. I think it'll help save lives. And I, the feedback I've gotten from my neighbors is that they're supportive, but they do have concerns about enforcement as well. They don't want us passing a law that is not going to be enforced. So, that's, that's the feedback I've gotten from my four neighborhood associations where I, we've had this conversation, so.
Yeah, yeah, I really agree with you. I think if we can figure out how to enforce it and make it meaningful, it's a great way to save lives. Just saying, just saying it doesn't save lives. It's gonna require us to step up and make the kind of hard decisions it takes to add to the enforcement mechanism we've got in this community to, to slow the place down. Will this be handled neighborhood by neighborhood, Virginia, or is this gonna be something city-wide?
Yeah, that was a conversation that I had with staff, and the original idea was neighborhood by neighborhood. But I, I really feel that it needs to be city-wide at, at one time because it would be really difficult, I think, for anybody. It would be hard to educate that as well as hard to comply for somebody, right? Going from one neighborhood that's 20 to another neighborhood that's 25. I think right now what's great about the speed limits that we have is that you can, if you don't see a sign, you can definitely look around you and see where you're at and what you should be doing, right? I'm in a business district or I'm in a residential. We have all had that training and we know, we should know what those speeds are and should comply. So, I really feel strongly that it needs to be city-wide all at one time. All residential streets would, would drop. That's what my goal is.
Okay, good. Thank you. Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I support the motion by Counsel Stapleton as well. I mean, usually at middle of the night, I hear cars just revving up and down, like, a few blocks away from where I live. And I'm just waiting for the day for it to hear a huge crunch as a result of it. And so, I, I want to be able to see this policy come into fruition, but I also wanna make sure that, you know, when it's passed, that we actually have ooms for it to make it happen, for lack of a better word. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, any further discussion? If the... Did you wanna close, Virginia? Did you wanna say anything more? Okay. Would the recorder please call a roll?
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council at the earliest possible date hold a public hearing on the draft Salem climate action plan, followed by council deliberation on the plan.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Anderson, you want to?
And then, I don't, I think I'll just go now. I would like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
So Counselor Phillips. I move that the city council accept the report of the Salem Climate Action Task Force. And appoint a council staff subcommittee to make recommendations. For implementation of the recommendations in the report.
Second.
Second by Stapleton.
So, yeah, just briefly. I, I hear all the things that are, you know, passionate and dedicated volunteers. Tonight who, who've testified. And, you know, who have been involved in the, you know, tens of hours, you know, it's not hundreds of hours of time in terms of preparation. Of the Climate Action Task Force. You know, again, I can't speak for my fellow counselors, but it's my, my broad belief that all of us truly understand. And appreciate the seriousness of the science. I don't think any of us are, you know, on the take with fossil fuel companies. I mean, this is a big, important issue. I know personally that I would like a bit more, you know, a hundred and eighty different strategies is a lot to wrap my brain around. And I would like the process of a council staff subcommittee. To consider those in a diligent and thought-out fashion. You know, perhaps it's just I'm biased because I served on the subcommittee this past summer. With Counselors Gonzalez, Hoy, and Counselor Stapleton, as well as members of the Planning Commission in terms of. You know, the zoning subcommittee and, and the impact on, you know, making those targets of, you know, reducing greenhouse gases by fifty percent in twenty thirty-five. And, and being carbon neutral by twenty fifty. But I found that process to be very educational and, and very worthwhile. So what I'm asking for is, is this substitute motion. I think that we're all balancing a lot and we've learned tonight that, you know, we're going to be short for a week or two. In terms of counselors. So I, I think that, you know, this is a, a better motion.
Okay, Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Yes, I want to support Counselor Phillips in this substitute motion. And I agree with him. I really gained a lot from the subcommittee that I served on with him and I, I feel. Like moving the Climate Action Task Force ideas there and giving us the space to work together collaboratively. With staff and counsel who. Really, I love talking with you all and doing work sessions and whatnot because I gained so much from those conversations. And how we can learn from each other from across the city and the different wards on how to move forward on things. And doing this kind of subcommittee would give us the opportunity to meet several times. And also allow the public to provide feedback at each of those meetings and be more present. With more time to dive into each different segment. To see how these things work together and build off of each other so that we can reach our goal. I feel like that format really provides the space and time for. For the dedication it's going to take to get this done right. And so I would love to see us move forward in this way. Because this climate action is so vital and important for me personally. I'm really looking forward to the work that we have ahead of us and I hope my other counselors will support. Counselor Phillips in this substitute motion.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm now into my eighth year on the council and normally I don't have any. Qualms about which way I'm going to vote on something. But this does cause me some concern. I first, I guess I would like to ask a few questions of the city manager. And before I do that, I'll, I'll, I'll back up a bit and say that. The substitute motion was. In effect, what my first motion was. I made a motion to the council, to the, I don't know what you would call it, the scheduling committee, the mayor and the city manager and. Counselor Hoy is council president. And after some consideration and deliberation with constituents and other folks. I, I changed my motion to make it the second motion. And my original motion was that we weren't, I, I wanted to make sure that we were. Moving forward, but not my original motion, this current motion, that we're moving forward. And I know that I still have some concerns about. Policy administration. And I think those have been assuaged a bit because normally we set the policy and we've already set the policy as the council. We adopted climate action goals, we, a, a climate action task force, we adopted goals of fifty percent greenhouse gas reduction by thirty-five. And carbon neutral by fifty. So with that background in mind, that the council has set that policy, we have, coming from Mr. Powers, item six E. On this agenda today, which is a. Basically, without reference to any of my motions. A plan by the staff to move forward under the policy that the council has already adopted. So I'm particularly interested, Mr. Powers, in. The recommended priority list. You have them listed. And I, I want to look at pages three, four, and five of that because there are. On page three, it's in-process or ongoing actions. On page four, it's already planned or for initiation within two years. And on page five, it's current or pending state requirements. It's only pages one and two that says these are kind of the, the first of the fifty-five that we as the. As the city staff want to look at. So I guess my first question is. With or without any of these motions, Mr. Powers, it's your intention and the staff's intention. To move forward in the matter you describe, describe in, in item six E.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to. To talk to the information report that's later on your agenda and certainly. For the reasons that Counselor Anderson mentioned and that were mentioned previously, the adoption of the goals by council. And the inclusion of, of climate action in, and hopefully your soon-to-be-approved policy agenda for twenty twenty-two. You know, staff has a sense, I have a sense, the, the, the staff that will be working. On implementing a climate action change has a sense of council that this should proceed. And we have, through the, through the work of the task force, we have identified. Fifty-five of the one hundred and eighty strategies that, that we believe can be implemented. Over several years. The subcommittee that is under consideration could certainly help with, with the. Further vetting and, and prioritization for recommendations to council at a later time because some of those do require. Budget action. Some will require regulatory or code changes. And those are in the, in those first two categories that, that Counselor Anderson mentioned.
Tom, did you?
Well, I think that's enough for now, Mr. Mayor. It's just that. I, my, my motion as made before substitution. Wanted to send the strongest possible message to the staff. To the, and to the public that we were committed to move forward on that. And. You know, I, I, I'm trusting in the city manager and his interim replacement. And in the council itself that, that. Even if we look at the substitute motion to accept and move forward with recommendations. That is nearly the equivalent of, of my original motion. To, to. Hold a public hearing and then deliberate. Now, I guess my question also would be to. Counselor Phillips and the city manager Powers. I would presume that. This would involve public hearings on, on the various recommendations. And I guess Counsel Phillips first and then Mr. Powers.
Yeah, I don't see my motion as precluding public, public hearings moving forward.
My, my understanding, Counselor, was more of a, these were going to be public meetings. The, the. This committee. Would, would hold public meetings allowing for public testimony at each of their meetings. I'm not sure. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Public input.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, I really appreciate the work done by three fifty and. You know, we're in a crisis here. And I guess my question is. Which motion is going to move things forward more quickly? And I have to tell you. I still don't know. You know, so I'd like to hear what the other council has to say, or the counselors have to say. And, you know, I, I, I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote on. On the substitute motion, but I want to hear what other counselors have to say. And I think the manager had a, a response to, to something.
Counselor Hoy?
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for your motions and substitute motions. I feel like. I'm trying to process where we're at with the two different motions. And I feel like we're, everybody's saying the same thing. We have adopted a climate action plan. We've adopted climate goals. I believe they were all unanimous. And if they weren't, it was at least unanimous amongst the group, maybe that's here. And I, I believe that we are moving forward on our climate action goals and fully intend to move forward on our climate action goals. I know that's certainly my personal goal and I believe it's that of the council as well. And that regardless of which one of these things we do, we're going to be moving forward quickly, as, as quickly as possible. The. I guess the difference is with, as I see them with Counselor Anderson's motion. And Counselor Phillips's motion is with Counselor Anderson, we're going to hold a hearing and we're going to talk about a hundred eighty-five or whatever the number is. Of all the different ideas and then. I don't know, send staff on their way to do some, our business with that. Or under Counselor Phillips' substitute motion. We're going to move, move forward with them in, in chunks as, as recommended by the, the staff. And there will be a public process and council process to be able to inform those priorities and that work. And that if we don't like the direction that that group decided, we can always make another decision to change that direction. So in my mind. Counselor Phillips' motion or substitute motion. Takes us in, in a way that I can comprehend it. I can't. It's hard for me to imagine digesting a hundred eighty-five recommendations. And because I don't have the luxury of having been on that committee, so I don't know that work. I'm just going to be reading this report and trying to figure out. What to do with a hundred eighty-five recommendations that you all have spent a lot of time already looking at, or a bunch of us have. So I, in my mind, it makes sense to just, the staff has got momentum. Let's just keep it going and get this, get as many of these things implemented ASAP. We have our council policy and our goal. Let's get to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powers, did you want to speak?
Council President Hoy said much more eloquently than I the point I was going to make.
Very good. I think he spoke for a lot of us on that. Okay? Then, oh, okay, Tom.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
I'm, I'm exhibiting my angst in a public way and. You know, I, 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 I make this analogy a little bit in this to way back when we had the eighty-three million dollar police station bond. I had four or five motions prepared to make and I made two or three of them. I never got a second. So I, I believe I, I'm sorry, I couldn't quote from Jimmy Buffett in honor of Counselor Lewis, but I quoted from Bob. Dylan, you don't need a weatherman to know which way the wind blows. And so. I ended up voting for that eighty-three million dollar to put it to the public and it lost as. In hindsight, I think it should have lost. And then we came up with the sixty-three or sixty-four million dollar that did pass. You know, so I, part of the reason I voted for the, 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 the. Police station motions was that I am a team player. And I, I, I would rather see a unanimous council motion. On the substitute motion than a divided, a, a, a council on the original motion. And I think from my perspective. The former is much more likely, well, they're both likely to happen. I mean, I think we're going to be unanimous or close to it on the. On the substitute motion. I'm not sure how, whether we would be. Even passing on the, on my original motion. So I have to say with. A lot of trepidation, but based on. What has been said by the other counselors and what has been said by the city manager. And with the understanding that we've already set the goals, we've already set that policy and staff can move forward as they, as they proposed in. Six, whatever it is, six E. You know, the only thing that still causes me pause is we've accepted it as opposed to adopt it. And, you know, I'm a lawyer, that's all somatic issues, but I think it's here. So. You know, with my fingers crossed, I think I'm going to vote for the substitute motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, if, oops, sorry, Vanessa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly comment and first of all acknowledge the fact that. All of my colleagues who've spoken up have expressed a desire to order in the same direction, which is in the direction of transparency. And supporting climate action. So how we get there sometimes can have a little bump on the road now and then. But I appreciate the fact that we're engaging in respectful dialogue to move forward. There are a number of things I'd like us to implement ASAP. And I just appreciate the fact that we're having a civilized conversation about how best. To take action on climate and how it is impacting every aspect of our lives, whether it's wildfires. Ice storms, heat waves, smoke, et cetera. There can be no doubt that we are seeing the impacts of climate in our city and it impacts people who live at the margins the most. So. I'll be supporting the substitute motion, but more importantly, I'll be supporting efforts to bring climate action to our city. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Amy, would you like to call a roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am also going to support the substitute motion. And, you know, I, you know, it's important that not only do we have this plan in place, but we also. Hold it accountable so we actually do actionable steps versus just something we pass in name and just kind of let rot on the shelf. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Amy, would you call the roll then, please?
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we will move on then. Give me just a sec. Five C.
And Mayor Bennett, we do have a brief PowerPoint presentation of the.
Five C.
Policy agenda that council has discussed at previous.
Now, is this, is, is this an action item then?
It is. This would be your adoption of your twenty, twenty-two policy agenda.
We don't have a recommendation. It just says information and discussion. So you want us to have a, I just want to make sure if we need a motion that Counselor Hoy is aware.
If, if you're prepared after the, the presentation to adopt it, it would, it would be helpful if, if more time is needed. We can bring it back to a future council meeting.
Okay. Well, if it's going to show, Mr. Manager. Courtney, if it's going to show up on action items, let's have actions suggested and then we can decide if we're not ready, okay? It helps us, I think.
Yes, and, and.
Or put it under an information report and that's fine too. Okay?
I'm prepared to take your feedback this evening and bring to you a final copy of it for your action at a, at a March meeting.
So you want us amending this, discussing it court amendment, or what, what would you like?
Would you mind if I start?
I want to know what you want.
My goal is to just have confirmation that this is the direction that you'd like us to take. It's not a formal action this evening.
Okay.
Unless you wish, but I would be bringing back a report to you with a final draft of it, all, all pretty. For your adoption at a future meeting, probably in March.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen and show you a little bit about the. I'm just going to share my screen and show you a little bit about the work that we've been able to accomplish so far. And for those who are listening, um, or, and our ASL translators and Spanish translators, um, my name's Courtney Knox-Bush and I'm the Strategic Initiatives Manager for the city. I'm here tonight to share with you what we've heard so far about your policy agenda priorities for the coming year. And your policy agenda, just for a quick reminder, that's the work program for the city council and Stafford twenty-twenty-two, and it informs our budget for the next year. So just to start with a quick reminder and review, it's been a while since we last talked about these things. Um, in November, we had a work session with you and we got some key inputs from a, an annual statistically valid community survey that we do about satisfaction with city services. We reviewed our progress, um, in the last year against those priorities that you set forward for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year and set priorities for the budget for fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, and then in January, we, we brought the entire policy agenda again to you in draft form, but we really spent some good quality time talking about the top priority called responding to our sheltering crisis. That policy priority we spent quite a lot of time on. And so again, tonight, the purpose is really to get consensus on the policy direction so that we can move forward and bring you a final draft, um, all pretty and ready for public distribution uh, at your upcoming March meeting. So just another quick reminder, um, at, at your November work session, we identified four priorities for twenty-twenty-two. Those priorities being responding to our sheltering crisis, planning for our future and engaging our community, sustaining infrastructure and services. We also have this language in our, uh, strategic plan, and I just want to remind you that, um, the, for each priority area, we've got several initiatives that we think, um, ha, that we also have identified the primary role for the city in each of those areas. So we, you may see the term doer, and that's just taking the primary responsibility to execute the action that would be needed to make that thing happen, or a partner with other organizations, including potentially providing funding support, and then a convener, which is really about bringing other parties together to advance that initiative. So again, four big ideas and three types of ways we can participate. In that first area, this is in your staff report, there are seven, uh, initiatives. They are lettered A through G in the report. Those seven ideas are to respond to community requests for cleanup at scattered, unmanaged tent camp, uh, camps and RV sites. And in that case, we, the city has many roles, we're a doer, a partner, and a convener to make those, um, those things happen. We're also looking at finishing construction and opening the navigation center. That's that low barrier shelter. Um, and as you know, you've got plenty of updates on that, but that's another key initiative in this area. We're also citing and operating micro shelter village communities, and you've taken recent action on those things. Um, we're continuing to develop local partnerships, uh, and funding for a potential future sobering center and mobile crisis response. And then the last three in this area are transitioning more, um, folks into supportive housing, and we do that with the homeless rental assistance program and, um, vouchers, as you are well aware. Uh, then there's building more permanent supportive housing through our Salem Housing Authority with Sequoia Crossings and Euquina Hall. Um, and we also have an affordable housing developer incentive, which is also listed in your report, and then providing support to the regional efforts like the Middle Island Valley Coalition. In planning for our future, there are three primary initiatives to move forward. We're looking to complete the adoption of our Salem. We're looking to advance two key initiatives out of that work, the transportation system plan update and the Riparian Inventory for Natural Resources. All five is that particular area. In the engaging our community section, we are, um, using funding that was committed in this current year's budget to be able to launch the new City of Salem website in April of twenty-twenty-two. We will also in mid-two thousand twenty-two be able to launch a web-based access uh, to an information portal on performance measures so that people can touch base with the city more frequently on how we're doing. We will be, uh, finishing the customer service center plans and start construction so that that will open in spring of two thousand twenty-three. And we're planning to expand neighbor-to-neighbor communications with some support from communication staff to build their communication strategies to attract their audiences. In the sustaining infrastructure and services section, as you are well aware, we're pursuing a three hundred million dollar community improvement bond in November of twenty-two, and we are always looking for ways to lower expenses and increase revenue. And there's more detail, again, in the staff report that you were providing. In terms of next steps, we are in this annual cycle. We are, um, going to be taking your input on this policy agenda forward into a final version, as we discussed earlier, and then building the budget around those initiatives and priorities that you identify. And so that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
So th- this is, uh, staff's capturing of what was discussed previously by, by, by council at, at work sessions, uh, certainly council's opportunity this evening or when it's brought back to you for adoption. Have we missed anything? For example, tonight, council, uh, may, took a step toward initiating what could be a pretty, uh, intensive communications effort at least on, on, on lowering, uh, traffic speeds. Also in the area of planning, uh, you've heard from, uh, SEDCor on the need for, uh, planning our city's industrial and large commercial land, and that's done through an economic opportunity analysis. So it's, to, tonight's, you know, your opportunity, if you choose to respond to what staff has heard council discuss at, at previous, uh, uh, public meetings. Thank you.
Do you, do you feel like, uh, Mr. Manager, that, uh, like with, uh, Virginia's motion tonight, the twenty mile an hour, twenty, twenty's plenty, that that is covered by what you've got in the policy agenda, that that can move forward with, with good solid staff and support, or at least help us get there from here?
No.
No, okay. How, how do we get it in there?
Uh, I would, I would recommend that you add it specifically, uh, as, as a policy agenda priority for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the second item that I mentioned, the economic opportunity analysis, could wait until your twenty-twenty-three, uh, process, if, if this process is continued. But certainly, given council's, uh, action this evening, uh, it, it appears that, that twenty is plenty, has more urgency, uh, for council. I would, I would, I would recommend that it be captured a- accordingly, so it's not lost, uh, particularly as, 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 you know, as staff, uh, changes and, and, and we want to make sure we're, we're implementing, uh, council's policy direction.
Then I would suggest that be added with Virginia's permission, that we get that in there specifically by name, uh, in that transport, however you've, uh, done transportation. The other that is going to take some time and money, uh, and staff, uh, focus is, uh, dealing with this whole process around, uh, the climate action plan. Uh, we've described a, I, I think Counselor Phillips' motion created a kind of process. You have described a process, I assume, both demand, staff investment, uh, and at least sometimes should that be put in there somewhere?
I, I believe it is, perhaps with Courtney's.
Maybe I missed it then.
Uh, she could call that back up. On, on the question, though, of implementations, you know, certainly to, I think, meet the policy, uh, goals and, and not, not the greenhouse gas emission goals, but just the, the goals of urgency. Uh, you know, likely you'll be seeing a, a recommendation in the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three manager's budget for some climate action assistance, climate action coordination, tracking, uh, some dedicated resources to push, uh, push the, uh, the strategies forward and help coordinate those that can be accomplished with existing, uh, city resources or through, uh, partnerships and cooperation with other entities, uh, in, in the community.
Okay. Well, those are two that pop out to me. Does anyone have any others that you all have been talking about over the year that are not here, that should be here?
Mayor Bennett, um.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see Counselor Nordic's hand up, but, uh, no, you asked my question, uh, Mayor Bennett, uh, on the climate action. So I, I feel satisfied with that. Um, I'm going to be briefly selfish. Um, I appreciate that the sobering center is still mentioned, um, on the policy agenda. I, I am prepared to wait. I mean, I think that these are complicated things, as are most things that overlap with healthcare. I do continue to believe, as does the consensus of this body, that the navigation center remains our first priority. So I don't want to distract from that important work, but, uh, you know, the mobile crisis response unit and the sobering center things we're going to have to keep working on, and we're going to have to talk more about our role as like a convener versus a doer, because it's going to take a process to really recruit those things to this community.
Yeah. Uh, Counselor Nordike.
Um, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Counselor Phillips, I think you took the words right out of my mouth. I agree with you. I see that for both sobering center and mobile crisis response, we are identified as a partner, not a partner slash doer slash convener. And I feel like at this early juncture, we haven't decided exactly what the city's role will be with either of those things. Neither of those things are in place right now, and it seems that it's going to take a lot of effort from us as a city in order to make that happen. So I don't want, and we have a staff report that's going to be coming back to council specifically to talk about what a mobile crisis unit would look like. So I, the only hesitation I had that this document is drafted is that it only says partner for these two entities, sobering and mobile crisis. And I don't feel that we, as, as a council, have really made a final decision about that. So I would prefer it be more partner slash convener or slash doer, frankly. It's, I just feel like it's too soon to limit us to only a partner, considering nobody else is making it happen right now. So I would like to keep that open until we've had another time to look at it and look at the staff report that's coming up.
I'll show you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is a, I'm not sure how to, where, what the appropriate way to categorize what, uh, Counselor Nordike has just stated the, in terms of, in, with our priorities. But the, the thing, what we voted on relating to mobile crisis, uh, was to be a partner. We voted a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to provide funding to another entity to participate in that, in that program. And now since that time, things have shifted, certainly. And we're now going to have a staff report to consider other options. But at this point, the only formal action I think that we've taken would make us a partner. But I, it's fine with me if we categorize it under more than one thing. I just don't know that we've committed to that yet, because I think our only commitment was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars as a partner to, uh, a nonprofit. That's my take on it.
Counselor, I also, uh, think we've made a commitment to as a partner, uh, in the sobering center in that we got it built. I mean, it, it exists, it just doesn't have a, a, a funding mech. I mean, we've brought a, a sobering center to the table. That may be all we do as a partner, but that's certainly a partner activity rather than a, um, or a doer activity rather than just a partner, I guess. Uh, I don't know, I, I can see how we could put, put, put doer on both of them if we wanted to, to, to really indicate a sense of urgency in them, if that, uh, if that would be more appropriate.
I just, uh, Mr. Mayor, I thank you so much. I think it's worthy of further discussion. I'm not suggesting any final decisions right now. But, uh, it seems to me that if we really want to take these projects over the finish line, it's important what language we use, and I, I think we still have a tough road ahead. And so keeping an open mind about the city's precise role, I think is important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I guess, oop, sorry, go ahead.
Would you mind if I just summarize the feedbacks so far?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so what I'm hearing is that we should be adding an initiative to lower traffic speeds on city streets with the Twenty Is Plenty campaign, and we should be adding something around furthering the climate action plan, and we should be on sobering and mobile crisis may need to add in the explanation that a change in role is possible pending future conversation at council. Excellent, thank you.
Got one. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were asking for our feedback on that, on that summary. Uh, my read on the climate action part of it is that that information is already, uh, captured throughout, but that's how I read it, but I'm fine, uh, highlighting it even more. Uh, but it felt like it's, it's already listed under a couple of the different categories. So I'm personally fine with where it is, but I'm fine, um, highlighting it even more as well.
Yeah, that's, that's the understanding of what, when I, when I mentioned it, that that was the response I got, that it's pretty well-covered. But, uh, if you can figure out a way to say it differently and more, that'd be fine. Tom?
Yeah, in light of our earlier lengthy discussion, I would be in favor of highlighting it as much as we can.
Well, let's get a yellow highlighter and make it clear. Okay, what else we got? Anything else? And I think you've hit, oop, sorry.
I, I didn't mean to, to interrupt or prolong this conversation, but I mean, the bond is incredibly important. I mean, like, yeah, the bond this year is like, you know, we're got to do a lot of things all at once, but that bond is imperative. So, you know, I, this will be the beginning of many times that I say this. Please strongly consider supporting this bond initiative, uh, that'll be on the ballot in November, at least that's the goal. You know, for no new taxes, three hundred million dollars over ten years for imperative, much-needed things. Um, you know, please, community, thank you.
And please do it despite any time you disagree with us on everything else we do. That this really is important, the other things we can deal with in other ways, but don't hold some of these ideas against the city as we try to take care of public safety and the other issues associated with that bond measure. Okay. Okay, we go to information reports.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have, uh, three point three A.
Oops, Tom, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm with staff report.
Second, yeah, I was due a second, sorry.
And here are my concerns. There were, and I have, I have conveyed this to, uh, Julie Warnicki, the transportation planner, and also, I think, to the city manager and Director Fernandez. There were, um, uh, uh, and these all may not be current, but there were a number of, I don't know, nine or ten other potential, um, uh, items where we could, uh, uh, apply for federal transportation fund. And I, uh, uh, I've listed them to, uh, Ms. Warnicki, but in general, multi-use pedestrian improvement, pedestrian crossing, multi-use bicycle, uh, facility, Winter Maple Greenway improvements, State Street, that's Mr. Mayor, that's our State Street project, and Broadway Street at Hood to Pine. And we had a long discussion about Broadway Street at a, you know, I don't know, two months ago, maybe, about the turn lane, or are we going to put a turn lane there? And we decided not to. So there's a bunch of things there that it sure seems to me that fit in with what we're trying to do, including with, uh, climate action, but it also fits in with, uh, multimodal transportation and multi-use. So I'm just curious as to, uh, uh, you know, why we made the decision of the three we did. And I know one of them is McGill West, and, uh, every time we talk about that, I talk about separated bike paths. So I'll put in that plug, but I really like to hear from the public work staff as to how we arrived at these three and why the other ones did not make the cut.
Hey, Mr. Fernandez, do you want to help us out?
Thank you, if I may, I know Julie Warnicki's on the call as well. Very simply, uh, all of those are worthy projects, and we looked at all of those, uh, projects, and we always do. Uh, these are federal funds and they are, they are very limited. uh, projects, and we always do. Uh, these are federal funds, and they are, they are very limited. We have to compete at SCATS. So as Julie and I looked at it, uh, we thought that the first priority continues to be McGill Crest, which is, um, uh, a project that has all the federal permits, so it's ready to go. And then we also look, and it's on the list, at the buffered bike lanes on Commercial Street, which are already funded but are short of being that also is already federally permitted. And that's it. So those are the, those are the projects. And, uh, uh, one is for the buffered bike lanes on Commercial, and the other is on McGill Crest, uh, which has been our, our priority. And, and these are sitting out in, Julie can be more specific, in, uh, 26, 27. And so they're, they're, they're out a few years. Uh, anyway, uh, I will say in closing, and I think Counselor Anderson, we sent you the, uh, the information that we redesigned McGill Crest, uh, to make sure that we have the buffered bike lanes. And, uh, so, so
Thank you, thank you.
For the 22nd Street realignment, and we'll, we'll be in for, uh, for the rest of the project as we get this funding in place.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one follow-up, I see that Mr. Hoy has one. I'm particularly interested in the State Street, because we did a whole lot of work on that project. Uh, and it was a, a, a fairly, um, oh, I'd say open and frank discussions between the neighborhood groups about how we're gonna, the most building code stuff, how we're gonna put the setbacks, what it's gonna look like. Uh, are we gonna do it two-way streets, et cetera? So I, I'm just curious as to, just in general, you know, where are we on that?
Yeah, there, there's a, a council, there's a lot of projects that are in the queue. Uh, in fact, Julie and I talked a lot about State Street and State Street, uh, versus Maple Winter Bike Line. Uh, but, uh, family-friendly bike lane, which actually came first before State Street. So, so we had that conversation. And which one, if, if we, if there was enough money, which, which one would go first? And, and frankly, if we were gonna, if there was another project that we could have, uh, recommended, it probably would have been Winter Maple before State Street, simply because that's been in the queue longer. Uh, so, so there's a lot of projects in the queue. There's nothing like a bond measure to clear the queue of projects. So, uh, uh, so we certainly have recommended all of these projects to, uh, to the council subcommittee, uh, working on that. This is a very limited, uh, 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 program. It is a program that is our federal fund, so they come with a lot more strings. So, so we just looked at the ones that would compete well and, and already have the federal permits in place.
Thank you for that information. I'm also happy to hear you say that some of these projects that we listed that didn't make it into the top three, they can be covered by the, by the maintenance bond.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's a very, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that.
Okay, Councilor Hoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Warnicki. Uh, I'm just, I just want to say that I am thrilled about the Center Street project. Part of this, all of them are great, but especially, uh, the Center Street, uh, from 45th to Corden Road. When I first ran for city council five years ago, one of my priorities was improve, the improvement of Center Street. It's a, it's a street that is fraught with difficulties in that it goes in and out of the city and the county because of our, our wonky, jaggedy, uh, boundaries out here in my part of the city. And, uh, so I think that had been a barrier for a while, and it's no longer a barrier to getting this project done. There are literally dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of schoolchildren that, uh, catch the bus on Center Street every morning and get home and, and get off the bus at night. There aren't any sidewalks on a good portion of it. There, there wasn't lighting back when I first ran. There is lighting now. We got, like, we're working with the county commissioners. There, there is lighting there now, so I'm really excited about that. And this is just a great project and a great, great cooperation with our county partners. And I'm really happy because it's so going to benefit the residents that live near Center Street and out in here in East Salem. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Hoy. I, uh, the, the, the other two projects that are on the list are both in cooperation with, uh, Marion County. So again, Julie being on the, uh, on the technical advisory committee and being over in, uh, in SCATS, uh, she recommended, highly recommended that, that we had those two projects, because we, we felt also that they compete well, given that they're in partnership with Marion County.
Great. Very good. Yes, Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, I mean, I, I serve as an alternate on, uh, SCATS, uh, the MPO that this kind of goes through, right? Uh, Director Fernandez?
Yes.
Yeah, so th- these make sense to me that they're, they're ready to go in terms of a federal application, and they've been ranked by that organization already. Um, and then selfishly speaking, uh, number one on this list, the Commercial Street is, is mostly in Ward Three. So I'm encouraged to see this. I know that there are morningside neighborhood residents who've been waiting for this for a long time. So I'm sure that this will help, uh, improve that, that section of Commercial Street.
We look forward to it, Council.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, for helping us out on this. Uh, ready to vote then? Uh, Amy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, motion passes. We'll go then to information reports. Councilor Hoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, uh, talk about 6A for a moment. Uh, the Planning Commission recommendation of instead of adopting a new city flag. And I mostly have, I think, a process question for the city manager. Uh, where do we go from here with this recommendation? What would that process look like? And so on. Um, I do think it's a, a topic worthy of conversation, and I would like to just know where we go, uh, now that we have this information report.
Is, is, is Brian here tonight?
He is. I noticed his name on our participant list, and it would be wonderful if we heard from him, I think.
I don't need to pull him up. There he is.
There he is, with those flags right there.
Okay. Well, Brian, what do you think's gonna happen next? What do you want to?
Well, I think that, uh, the simple, simple answer is that you have to decide whether you want to or not change the flag. And then if you do decide to change the flag, which would be a great idea, you would either choose I, the, choose A, one of these, one of the four that have gone through the two-year-long process, or two, decide to run your own project and have submissions brought in through council.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have, have you come up with a, an answer to Counselor Hoy as to how then we take Mr. McKinley's four flags or our, whatever someone wants to draw up, uh, but let's say his four flags, and proceed forward with adopting a new flag or not adopting a new flag? I mean, that's probably, it's probably kind of binary that way. Pick one flag and then decide if we like it better than our existing one, I guess.
Well, Mr. McKinley has applied considerable rigor, uh, to providing, uh, choices for council to consider. So I would not recommend, uh, opening up for community suggestions, counselor suggestions, city manager suggestions on what the city flag should be. I think one of the four that Mr. McKinley mentioned, any of those four would be, would be a fine, a fine choice. Mr. McKinley has, has also gone through some, uh, public participation. So I think the question before, before council this evening, or when it's brought back to council for action, would be if you believe the, the public process has been, has been sufficient to, uh, determine interest in what the city's flag should look like. Uh, if so, I, I believe his process also included some, some polling. Uh, and, and there is, there is a, a favored, uh, flag, uh, that, that council could, uh, indicate is council's preference. And we could come back to you with, with an action item that would, that would, you know, capture that. And we could also include some information regarding next steps as far as, uh, use of the new flag.
Well, I know, uh, Mr. McKinley contacted me, it must be four or five years ago. Four? Yeah, I mean, this, I know he has been working on this for some time, even working with people at the national level on flag that are, are specialists in flags and, and that know a lot about them. Uh, and I, I just wonder if what we shouldn't do is, uh, maybe agree that, uh, we'd like to pull this up uh, to, to the council for council action on whatever, you know, whatever we could kind of recommend. I don't know if you'd recommend it or how you would like to proceed, but we could move this forward, bring it up to us and, and have us make a decision. I think leaving Brian sitting out there four years, working on this as hard as he has worked on it, and the Planning Commission, I think it's time to kind of get it to a, to a decision. Does that make sense? How would we, how would, I'm sorry, Trevor?
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, with so far everything said, uh, Mayor Bennett. Uh, my, my request would be that we line up the pictures with the poll results. I, I have looked at the pictures prior to tonight, but it was a few months ago when it came through the Statesman Journal. And I just want to make sure that I understand which picture is lined up with which polling result.
Right.
Yeah.
Would that, would that, uh, hold you up on bringing it to the council into a decision-making process?
No.
Okay. I wonder then, Mr. Manager, do you, what kind of, what do we need to do to, to launch that process? What would we need to do tonight to kind of kick it off?
Well, certainly, if you wanted to make a motion, you can. Otherwise, I think this, this discussion, uh, uh, certainly gives, again, the sense of council that you'd like to see, uh, uh, an action item at a future council meeting that would, uh, allow, uh, council to choose the flag design. And again, my recommendation is choosing among the four that Mr. McKinley has already, you know, th- thank you, uh, Mr. McKinley, for your, for your time to really develop, uh, some, some outstanding, uh, choices for, for council's consideration.
Did, would everyone, uh, is there any, uh, uh, any problem with moving forward with this? Just having staff move forward and bring this to us at, uh, sort of soonest, you know, whatever works for them in terms of, everybody okay? Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that then? Mr. Powers, uh, you let Kristen know that'll be your first major act, is to get that flag in here. Because I don't think we got to ask you to do it in your last two weeks. Great. Brian, thank you so much for your patience and your hard work on this. Very, very good. Really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. All I want to do is have a flag that is as beautiful as the lovely city we all inhabit.
Great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. We look forward to hearing from you when the four flags are lined up in front of us with the polling, and we can talk about it, and we'll help, help with public input and make a decision on this and get, get it resolved when moving forward, one way or the other. Thank you so much. Okay. Any, anyone else? Any other information items? Okay, why don't we, oops, sorry, Virginia?
Uh, no, no worries. Thank you. It was a last minute, should I talk about it or not? Um, and I guess I just would love to have, um, a process question answered. And that is to, uh, Counselor Phillips' motion about forming a, a, a task, uh, a council staff, uh, subcommittee for the recommendations, uh, put forward by staff here with our Climate Action Plan. I am guessing, Mayor, that you would, uh, be in charge of appointing different council members and, and then working with city manager to, to get staff together with us and then communicate that with us. I just, I'm trying to talk about it so that folks in the community, uh, one, I get it right. But two, that we communicate kind of next steps on, on where we're going with that. Do you have anything to say about that?
That's, that's what I kind of understood would be what would happen. And I will be checking in with, uh, those of you who served on that committee. But I think there's also, Counselor Hoy reminded me, there are members who didn't get to serve on the committee, that it might be really worthwhile, uh, getting a chance to do a deep dive on this stuff, too. So, uh, I'll check in. If you, if you're interested, let me know. Uh, I've got another list of all your assignments, and I want to make sure I'm not loading every, I just had with Jim quitting. Uh, I've got a, a bunch of openings. I'm, I'm re, I'm having to rearrange council committees again. So, but if you're interested, please let me know. And I will be talking with, uh, Mr. Powers and his, uh, his folks about who they would like to have, uh, involved in this. I think the idea would be to keep it small, keep it people who are committed to having the time, uh, to look at 100 and, whatever it is, 36 or 86, uh, separate items, and can kind of appreciate how best to package this up and move it forward. I am very interested in seeing it occurring expeditiously. I personally liked what, uh, Mr. Powers was proposing, because it had, it had motion. It, it made it start to happen and become a reality. I, I don't want to see it get caught on a shelf. I think that's the thing that would be the worst right now, would be to let that happen. So we'll move it right along.
Thank you.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I think that's what I was expecting, and, and I'm with you. I would love to, you know, start our first meeting, hopefully next month, right, to kind of?
Right, yeah, just get going.
Get going, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll go to first readings then.
Ordinance Bill Number 322, an ordinance relating to land use, amending SRC 530.001, .005, .015, .020, .025, .030, .035, and .040.
Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council Advance Ordinance Bill Number 3-22 to second reading.
Second. Second by Phillips? Yes. In discussion? Okay, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, motion passes. Go to second readings.
Ordinance Bill.
There's gonna be one here. Is this the one where, it, not this one, but the next one, we do the robot voice, right?
Next one, we will have the auto-read and, yeah, be prepared. It'll take approximately six to seven minutes, because it slowed down somewhat, so it should be easier on the interpreters this time around.
Great, thanks, Amy. Go ahead then.
Okay, Ordinance Bill Number 222, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 3476 to 3480 Blossom Drive Northeast and adjacent lands northeast annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Kaiser Fire District. Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, motion passes.
Okay, and one moment here. And if you could give me a thumbs up when, uh, this starts reading, just to make sure you can all hear this, that would be great.
Okay.
Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 1321, an ordinance relating to land use, amending Salem Revised Code 50.710, 77.160, 110.030, 110.075, 111.001, 112.035, .050, 205.030, .035, 210.010, .045, 220.005, 235.030, 260.005, .010, 260.015, 270.010, .015, 300.100, .200, .520, .620, .720, 300.840, .850, .1110, 400.015, .055, 510.001, .005, .010, 511.001, .005, .010, 512.001, .010, .015, 513.001, .005, .010, .015, 514.